Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October third, two thousand twenty-three, and it is seven oh four P M. Like to start with a pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. So I would like to begin, we have any public comments? None? Any public correspondence?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make um two uh I I say I change in addition to the Board of Selectmen. Um I move that for the consideration of acceptance of donation from Holandia of a Christmas tree, we change word Christmas to holiday. On favor?
Aye.
Oh, saying none, and I'll explain more about that later. Um I'd also like to I'll make a motion that we add to the uh last part of the agenda, consideration of installation of new mini splits for the I T server room. On favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. Right. Um first order of business, I move we accept the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Uh any any discussion? It's pretty straightforward. And seeing. Good.
Yep.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries. Um, we have, okay, so we don't have a letter, but I move that we appoint to the Bethel Housing Authority Gary Rosado for as a registered Democrat.
Is is that our recommendation by the town committee?
Uh we'll go, yeah, in one second, and then we'll discuss.
One second.
Okay, and the discussion, so um this was a recommendation actually from Beth Kavagna. Um it, so what had happened, the town committee actually had um somebody also, and I spoke to the town committee, that individual really didn't care. Um Beth Kavagna really wanted this person, and it was outside the time that we could have appointed anyway. You know, because after it's it's been vacant for, you know, months. And I talked to the chair of the Democrat Town Committee today, and we kind of have a couple of other opportunities for the individuals, you know, he was talking about, including the Charter Commission. So they were okay with it.
They don't have it.
Yeah. Yeah, but the the individual who stepped forward, I mean, is totally going to be involved with something else, just wants to be involved.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. So uh next up, I move uh to approve the sale of engine eleven um with the uh offer that we have attached for fifteen hundred dollars. For a second, we can discuss.
Second.
Okay, so engine eleven. So so going right along, um, you know, we we did get an offer um for uh fifteen hundred dollars. We're we're going to have to, you know, get more information, obviously, from a person, um do some sort of contracting, you know, they're going to pick it up. They understand batteries are dead, that it's kind of stuck where it is, but that individual is very interested in it. Um I know that um Selectmen straight has done a lot of work trying to find folks who might be interested. It just doesn't seem like anybody's on the market right now, but.
Good. As I spoke to someone on an island, and they're looking to also replace their nineteen eighty-five engine. Uh couldn't convince them. Yeah, it 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 kills me to uh basically give this truck away, but.
Yeah.
Me too. It's not doing us, it's not doing us any favors, just sitting in the in the bay and um not being used, so.
Yeah, there comes a point, I think, where it just kind of won't diminish your returns.
Yeah.
You know, just sitting there taking up space. It is unfortunate. I wish I, you know, if I had the money and somewhere to put it, I would buy myself and do something with it. Yeah, that's it. Somewhere to put it. Right now, that's kind of tough, and I'll I'll probably regret it someday. I'll want it for something myself, but um, yeah. Any any comments from the fire department in this situation?
Um, you know, like you said, it's it was a very well-maintained uh apparatus. It uh served the town well, did a lot of um firefighting in its time, and uh even at the uh Clark Park Fire, we recently had a few years back on the uh day of Memorial Day parade, it outpumped any truck that was on scene there. Uh in great shape, so it's, you know, heartbreaking to let it go for such a uh low price with all of the uh the time and um great care that it got, and and it kept uh clean, and uh that's why it was um in service for so many years.
Yeah, it's a beautiful piece of work. Right, um before we vote, I would actually like to amend my amendment, or excuse me, amend my motion. Um that's what I'll do is I'll say I'll uh I motion that we approve the sale of engine eleven, uh contingent on the approval of the contract by our town attorney.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. Okay. And we are waiting, okay, so there we saw, yeah, we did that next. So um I move that we accept a donation from Holandia for a holiday tree for the municipal center lawn.
Second.
You'd like to leave the discussion on this?
Yes, uh for the for the past fourteen years, uh being a a selectman in town and and even before that, attending all the uh holiday facilities facilities that happen on on the town green there, uh I observed that we have a lot more people coming to the tree lighting and stuff now with the fire truck that used to come down with Santa Claus on it. Um I was really concerned about the safety and welfare of the people that uh go out there to to see Santa Claus and enjoy the evening. Um recently, uh I contacted Eugene uh Relic from um Holandia and uh asked him if he would be in tune to donate a tree to the municipal lawn. Uh he has agreed to uh donate a tree and and also install it for us. Um it would be uh approximately eight to ten or twelve foot uh Norwegian spruce. Um, I I really think that in the past couple of years, Santa Claus has come down to municipal center, been in the uh gazebo there, or even during really inclement weather, he's come inside the building too. But uh being on the front lawn, there's a lot more room, and I think it's uh an ideal situation for the town to accept this uh gift and move the uh tree lighting to the front lawn.
Um and and I I couldn't agree more. One of the things even last year, I've spoken to a number of people about this, because this offers a couple of other opportunities. Not only do we have a a safer event that the community can take part in with the actual lighting of the tree and having Santa Claus, because last year they even had to like bypass the tree lighting. Um it also allows more opportunity, more time for the folks who want to put uh religious displays on the BT Barnum Square, more time to have those displays, more time for people to come in and take pictures and things like that, and it doesn't interfere with what we're doing, you know, on the municipal center. Um I noticed we have one of the presidents of the Chamber of Commerce here tonight. Would you like to make any comments?
Yep.
I'm actually, yeah.
Chairman of the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
For for chairman.
Coach, I apologize, you're both chairman.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's a chairman and I'm a board member.
Gotcha.
He's close.
Yep, so we're here on, we definitely, the best I can to difference of course this decision, it's it's a great opportunity to keep the residents safe and yet town's growing. So we absolutely support the decision. I think it's much nicer to have it on the municipal lawn than in BT Barnum. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, and it just keeps them, as the crowds there, they don't have to shoot to go see Santa Claus, they'll already be there on.
Right.
They, you know, it's such a special event, and over the last several years, you've seen the BT Barnum's verge has become this big model of people, I think, that will just uh it'll be much sweeter and much more.
Yeah, we get the crowd off of the highway and all that, you know, it's just, you know, it's dark and all that, and the lights flashing and the stuff is so and I really think it's going to be an asset.
I do. It also, it it allows us to expand Winterfest a little bit, and we can have, we can have more going on. You know, because I know they do a great job along, you know, Main Street or Greenwood Avenue, but now we can do stuff along School Street in front of here. So I think it's a good opportunity for everybody, and I appreciate Rich bringing it to me. You know, this was one of the first things out of the gate we started talking about, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, so I believe we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, none, motion carries. I don't know, we are waiting uh for our illustrious Director of Public Works to sign on here. He said he'll be on in about a minute, but I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion. Um, I move that we uh approve installation uh of new mini splits for the I T server room in the amount of uh forty thousand dollars uh to be passed to the Board of Finance to come out of capital on the ground.
Second.
For for discussion.
Of course. So um with discussion, um basically, there's uh we'll call it an emergency's developed. We've been building out this server room. It's our main server room, and we've come to a point where it needs better cooling. The the older unit that we have in there kind of crapped out, doesn't work. We've got a makeshift air conditioner in the window right now. So what we're looking to do is put two mini split uh units in there that will take care of the cooling for the room. Um part of the idea of using two is we can run them at different times. We always have a backup. You know, if you look at the amount of money that's in that server room and and how important it is to the operation of the town, it's pretty significant, so we we have to make this investment. Um we have three bids in front of us. When the Public Works Director signs on, I'm going to have him go through, you know, what was chosen and why. That's really, really up to him. Um before we move any further, we may take a a recess for a moment here. And any, yes, sir.
Can I just ask a question? Uh I want to go back a second to the tree lighting. Um who's the sponsor of that? Is that the chamber?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
You was saying the service room overall, could or that, and we can go to a recess.
Success.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so um I'd like to go on recess, so make a motion for recess. Second, I'll go on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're in recess. We'll return back here when we get the Parks and Rec, or excuse me, the Public Works Director up. Parks and Rec, the thing about Parks and Rec all day.
So, so I we're not allowed to do, I think it's okay.
Thank you.
If we just.
Thank you.
Of course.
Of course.
Busy.
There you go. Um I'd like to call to order the uh out of recess, the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is seven eighteen. You got that right?
Yeah, close.
Seven nineteen.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think I just have to call to order, don't I?
Yeah.
I don't have to even vote on that, because I just called to order, right? Anyway, um Eric, thank you for joining us. So we've um we've got a motion on the table for acceptance of the mini split uh proposal for uh forty thousand dollars. So if you could, could you go through the various proposals we have in front of us here, so we can understand?
You're mute.
You're muted.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, let's see. Uh, so this is um this is the server room. As you know, there's there's there's, this is a main server room. I believe there's three server rooms altogether. Uh there's currently one mini split in there, um and it needs to run um pretty much all year as a uh as as I'm aware um due to the fact that the servers generate so much heat. There are currently, I think, three server racks in there, and um there's plans to expand at least one more now and probably up to five, so uh the current mini split is uh not reliable. Um uh Greg had to jerry-rig a a window air conditioner in there um when this first happened a couple a couple of weeks ago, mu- maybe it was a month or two ago at this point. Uh so basically, that's unreliable. So what we looked into was what I guess is becoming the standard now for server rooms, which is um basically two mini splits, really uh only one is needed at any given time, but there they'll install two for redundancy. So basically, if one goes down, you have a backup. Um and the way we're going to run it, the way that's typically done is, you know, you run one for three months, and then you switch off just so you're not, you know, so you kind of keep keep the wear and tear even and make sure everything's running okay. So that was the plan. Uh, we had uh three different firms come in and look at it with us. Uh we explained what we needed. Uh, we talked about uh what they would need to do. They had to do something called a manual J calculation. I'm not very familiar with it, but um basically taking the uh the server, uh the the taking what would be the total amount of servers in the room uh if if the room is maxed out, and the B T U output of those, and basically uh essentially calculating how much heat would be output by these um these server machines. Um and from that, they they computed what kind, what size of units we needed. We got three uh quotes for for the installation. All three of them basically recommended um Mitsubishi's, I think it was. Uh it's in there somewhere, and I think um anyway, um I lost my train of thought there for a second, but uh we had um we had E S, um E S C was one bidder, we had Edgerton was another bidder, and B and D Control there was a third bidder. Um, all of them are companies that we've worked with. Um, I believe Edgerton currently ma- was maintaining the one that was uh the one that was unreliable for us. Anyway, um, their bids all came in around the same amount. There was a little bit of um variation, so you have all three of those bids in there, plus there's a couple of other things. I'll get to that in a second. Um. The, just so you know, the Edgerton quote in total came to about twenty-six thousand. There was a base price of twenty-three, plus another three for the Wi-Fi enabled. And by the way, um all of them, we want, you know, part of the specs that we wanted was we wanted it to be Wi-Fi enabled. We wanted um uh Greg to be able to monitor it as part of the building maintenance controls that he does, the H V A C controls, and also Nick to be aware if there's any kind of problem for him to receive an alert. Um, so Edgerton came in at about a total of twenty-six thousand, E S C came in at about a total of thirty thousand, and B and D also came in about a total of thirty thousand. Um if you want to dig into those quotes, I can explain that. They're not, that's not necessarily um the bottom line and what you'll see there, but if you want me to go into that, I will. Anyway, um we discounted, so one of the things that came up with this, that that it plays a a factor into our decision besides simply price, is that um where this room is located, um, the the outside um unit for the mini split, um the current mini split, you can see this, I showed it to Dan, it's mounted on the wall because there's a sidewalk right there, and we're, we weren't allowed to just put it um right there. There really wasn't any place to put it, so the current one is mounted on the wall, the exterior wall, brick wall, uh which makes it hard to service. Um it it's kind of in an awkward position. Uh, so one of the contractors suggested we put it on the roof above, where there's ample space and it's flat area, and so the service would be much easier, and we uh after discussing that internally, we thought that was a better way to go. So then we we actually um, we had back and forth with them, by the way, this, there, we didn't just um uh we we asked for all three of theirs opinions on this idea that we had. Um Edgerton uh wasn't really into doing that, so um we didn't look at their quote any further, and that left E S C and B and D, both of whom um were willing to um put the units on the roof. Um, B and D came in as a slightly lower bidder by only two dollars, believe it or not. Um, and I think that just shows that that these bids were all very consistent, and I think that was, you know, that's a good sign. Um, so we're recommending to go with B and D uh for the base price. Let me see, where's my uh? Let me put my email in here. I included a little table um Mary had, and I must have misplaced it. Anyway, uh, sorry. Uh, yes, so the base price, that that's the, if if you look at the um the email I sent to Mary that she included in the uh backup, there's just like a little bit of a few numbers there. That base installation price is a thirty thousand five thirty-three that you see, that's for B and D control there. There's also a need for some electrical work uh to go with that. We had Roger Electric provide a quote for that, and it was small enough that we uh um we didn't get a competing quote for that. Oh, excuse me, one second, my son is. Sorry about that. Um, so that's the electrical work, that's the four thousand seven seventy-five, and then the roofing work is just a small amount of of um patching work, really, uh to complement that, that um none of the contractors were uh going to do, qualified to do themselves. So we got that quote from Offshore Construction who use for roofing. So that's the uh twelve seventy-five you see there. Um, so you add all that up, it's about thirty-six, uh excuse me, thirty-six thousand five hundred or so. Um, and so at that point, I I rounded it up to the request of forty thousand. I was a little bit, you know, I was kind of going back and forth um how much contingency to keep in there, but it's about three thousand dollars and change. I I think that's probably going to be enough. There there is a bit of uncertainty, because we are going to be going up to the roof, uh so, you know, that we know, I'm not saying that I'm anticipating any anything specific to go wrong. I'm just saying, you know, we we just wanted to have a little bit of padding there in case something unexpected shows up. Uh I went up there myself yesterday with Greg to take a look. It looks pretty straightforward, so I don't anticipate anything happening that we we hadn't seen. Um but uh if that's there, the bids are there for your examination, and and I think I think, Dan, I've covered everything. Uh, that's a pretty thorough background, but let me know if you have any questions.
Um, Eric, I'm the uh Edgerton's bid. Uh they had an option uh uh for an upgraded controls, and that brought it up to the near the same price as uh the other one from um B and B. Um, so did uh B and B uh also provide those uh extra controls in their bid?
Are you talking about the Wi-Fi enabled controls?
Oh, it says on the second page of Edgerton's bid, the upgrade controls for Kumo Wireless, including new wireless thermostat Kumo uh with interface installation of of uh components.
Yeah, so we, after we went through the bids, the first time we sent um questions to all three of the bidders to confirm if they were all providing uh either the same thing or equivalent. Um, I haven't included those answers, but um I can get them to you, but essentially, yes, uh B and D was going to provide um the same controls.
The same controls.
Yeah.
And then uh the one from uh E S C, um there uh they had given two prices, one for an L G equipment, one for the Mitsubishi. Uh the Mitsubishi was twenty-eight oh thirty-five. And then he had an add alternate also, but that was for the electrician.
Yes, so we decided, um so their their add-on for the electrician, I believe, was sixty-eight hundred or so.
Yeah.
Our electrical, our our electrician came in at at around forty-eight hundred, so about two thousand dollars less, so.
Was E S C uh willing to use our electrician?
Um, yes, we could use that. Uh I I I don't see why we couldn't use um yeah, I think we could use um our electrician for that. That's that's an option. Let me see here.
Think of using the L G equipment, is that where?
No, no, the the Mitsubishi, twenty-eight.
Yeah, with the six thousand.
Yeah, for his electrician, six thousand, but for use art, that they're willing to use our electrician for four, that makes it uh roughly two thousand dollars cheaper. I don't know if they wanted, you want to do something different, two thousand dollars.
Well, I think that's the question to ask. Between the two.
Okay.
B and D versus E S C.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Just if you could do a spreadsheet for us, sort of, so we're all, so we're hundred percent sure everybody's been the same thing. You know, bid up, um, yeah, the company, Edgerton, they they did they figure using their electrician, or were they using our electrician in your base price?
Uh, they didn't include it in their price. Um, let me see.
No.
No, they didn't. They didn't include electrical price. Um, I believe they said um
You always do a special.
We would have to get our own. Sorry, unless you see that. Go ahead.
No, I didn't. I didn't see it in the Edgerton either. There's there's nothing about the electrician costs.
Um. Okay. Um, it may be, you know, I'm, of course, I should have um I should have had Mary include the questions and answers. I didn't think of that, but um it's probably in there. What I have here in my notes is that um they didn't include it in their cost, so I don't, I I it's probably a similar um similar situation where I I don't see why they wouldn't be okay with us using, excuse me, uh using our electrician.
Excuse me, can I, can I ask a question, Dan? Um, Eric, you you mentioned before that Edgarton wasn't interested in putting it on the roof, though.
That's right. That's why we didn't consider them.
Maybe if if that's what the decision is to put it on the roof, I don't see why we should even be discussing uh Edgarton's time.
Marty, the E S C, well, I was just asking about the electrician, if they included a price in electrician.
Yeah, I know, but it's kind of morphed into, you're asking now, or the board is asking, you know, why there's no electrical stuff in in Edgarton's. Well, why even discuss it? We're out of it. I mean, they're they're not going to be doing it, so. And the other question I had for Eric was, who's Greg?
Our Greg.
Oh, Greg Rux, sorry, sorry. I I would have, I didn't know you were.
Who is he?
Greg Rux is uh um our uh building maintenance supervisor.
And how long's he been working for the town now?
Oh, I don't know. Um.
I I've never met.
Longer than I have.
I never even heard of him.
Yeah, uh if you if you worked in the municipal building, you'd know him. He's he's uh usually around, so.
Right.
My apologies for, yeah, no, he's our building maintenance supervisor, so, and he's also got an electrical background, so um he was, we we he was involved in in uh looking through this. So we we evaluate, when we met with the contractors, Nick Catallo from I T was there, myself, Kathy, Greg was there. Uh we also had Joe Fallon from the Building Department there to make sure, uh because they're going to have to have um a permit uh through the Building Department to make sure that's approved, so we wanted to make sure that, I mentioned the manual J calculation, that's one of the things they're going to have to provide to get the building permit.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Eric, I have one question, just because it came up in the uh uh E S C proposal. Have we looked at it very carefully that there's no asbestos that will be there or disturbed? Is it asbestos free?
In uh in the ceiling.
I want to ask you.
That's free.
Okay.
For some floor tile.
Floor tile, right, under the carpets? Yeah, okay.
So um. Yeah, I I, yeah, there's no floor tile in the way. Um if you, so from that room, which is basically next to Phyllis's room, I, because I went up there yesterday with Greg to take a look, just to see for myself. Um, there's an attic space um above it, pretty, pretty tall attic space, I would say maybe eight feet, um and then there's a flat roof above that. Um you know, whether there's anything else, I I can't say.
Fair enough.
Yeah, you know, that's why I was kind of, you know, I I had the same kind of thoughts of when it came to the contingency, you know, what are possible contingencies that that could come up.
So so given the fact that we have two proposals that are close, but one's two thousand dollars less, was there any other reason that B and D controlled air was picked over E S C? I'm just curious, because I think we're we're considering tabling and.
No, that's actually a good point. I I um I think maybe we just, we should have um, no, you're right. I think that's a good idea to, if we sw- if we swapped out E S C's electrician with ours, you're right, that would bring it below B and D, so um, that's something I will confirm. Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
So I tell you what, so I'd like to make a motion that we lay this on the table and come back for a future meeting.
Yes. A a special or a special meeting, because it's kind of critical.
Yeah, I think I think we'll do, we'll do a special as soon as we can get the answers we're looking for. Um, for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's laid on the table, and I believe that is a wrap. And I believe that is a wrap.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Okay, we stand adjourned, thank you, everybody, for being.